Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is September 9th, 2025. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please bow your heads for a short invocation. As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. May wisdom guide our decisions, fairness shape our discussions, and compassion lead our actions. Grant us the courage to face challenges, the patience to seek solutions, and the vision to build a brighter future. May this meeting reflect our commitment to collaboration, respect, and service. I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah. Is there a motion to amend the agenda by adding an executive session for quasi-judicial deliberations after the City Council report?
Second.
It moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner? Yes. Okay. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Evan Russell. Thank you for your attendance, Evan. May we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, ma'am. I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for August 26th of 2025. I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Anyone have any corrections, additions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Okay, yes. Okay, before we get any further into the agenda, I'd like to welcome a special guest here tonight, Mary McDonald, who is a newly, not new, but newer member of the Montgomery County Commission. And Mary, welcome to Kettering and come to the podium. I understand you have a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council and audience. It's such a pleasure to be able to be here with you today. One of the promises I've made after election was that I was going to go throughout the county and introduce myself to offer our services to you at any area that you might need, that need our support in, and also to share a little bit about who I am. So I served on the City Council in the city of Trotwick for 18 years, and the last of eight, I served as its mayor. We endured and survived COVID-19 and a tornado, and those were really tough, tough situations for our city to deal with. And we do know now they're tough times, and it takes tough people to do the work that we do. So as a member of the Montgomery County Commission, I'm excited to be able to bring the experience of those years to the table and to again ask all of your support and also to offer my support to you. And Mayor, you have always, always been a great friend and supporter of me personally and the city of Trotwick, and I am absolutely honored to be able to serve you in this capacity and at this time. So I do have a document that I want to share with you. It is our 2025 State of the County Impact Report, and it kind of talks about the agenda for the commission, the things that we are looking to do and things that we have been doing over the last year. And I want to share those items with you just so that there's a complete connection with us, working with you, and know forever, we are always gracious to serve you.
And thank you so much, and we look forward to working with you for years to come.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you all have any questions for me?
Do they have any? No, guess not.
You guys are too easy.
I was at the State of the County a few months ago in a city presentation due to the Department of Homeland Security. I just need to make that available to us and all the work the county does that affects our community, whether that's water systems or social care.
Yes.
But it is really trying to connect the county and city to understand, and I think I felt a lot of members of the final report very much about the importance of Kettering.
That's wonderful. Thank you, because one of the reasons that we're making it our business to come out is that I didn't have the connection that I feel that I needed with the commission. And I think that oftentimes, you know, there is a level of disconnect when it comes from the city to what happens on the 11th floor. So we kind of want to bring it a little bit closer to home and make sure that people know that we absolutely understand the challenges that communities are having, and we want to celebrate the successes that you have. So we definitely want to come out for some ribbon cuttings and other great things that you're doing. Just give us a call, and we'll be right there.
You're welcome anytime.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Good night.
If you want to hand those to me or...
Clerk?
Clerk, someone can...
All right.
Well, she's up here, so.
All right. Give them to Brian.
I was going to make it short for you and just...
Clerk, too.
Okay, great. Okay. We do have a public hearing this evening, and we don't have these very frequently, so we might sort of file through it a little bit here. But I appreciate everyone coming out for it tonight. This is a hearing on the appeal of the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision in case number BZA 25-007, which approved the zoning administrator's decision that the zoning code does not permit keeping chickens on residential properties. First, the city staff will make a presentation. Then the appellant may present. Presentations will be made from the lectern right there. Witnesses, if any, will sit in the witness box. That's this one right here, located to the right. Now I'll call you up when it's time to sit in the witness box. All persons giving testimony of evidence will be placed under oath and be subject to cross-examination. If you have documents that you want council to consider, you may submit those to council at the end of your presentation. After the presentations, council will take comments from those members of the public who are present and wish to be heard. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons commenting will be placed under oath and be subject to cross-examination. Since City Council is sitting as judge and jury in this appeal, City Council will not respond to questions or make statements regarding what is presented tonight. Do not direct any questions to City Council or expect City Council to comment on the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed. This hearing is being recorded, and the recording will be the official record of the hearing. Please speak clearly and into the microphones. If needed, City Council may continue the hearings to a future meeting. Now, all persons wishing to speak tonight regarding the appeal should stand. Raise your right hand and take the oath. Okay. All right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before City Council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under penalty of perjury? You may be seated. At this point, Mr. Holmesy will make a presentation on behalf of city staff. Mr. Holmesy, you may proceed. Welcome.
Hello. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'll give a quick overview of the subject appeal and a quick overview of what was discussed and what staff determined to be the pertinent evidence discussed at the board.
Could you speak up a little bit, Ryan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What...I'll give a quick overview of the case, as well as the, a quick overview of the pertinent evidence that was discussed at the Board of Zoning Appeals meetings that we held on this. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Just to give a quick overview, the subject appeal deals with the keeping of chickens, and it is an appeal of the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals to uphold the zoning administrator's interpretation of the Kettering zoning code with regards to chickens not being considered household pets in the city of Kettering. So, a quick overview of the appeal process. The zoning administrator is empowered to interpret and enforce the zoning code. That authority is given in Section 1131.06 of the zoning code. Of course, when you're interpreting codes, there's always some risk of disagreement, and if there is disagreement, residents are able to appeal the zoning administrator's interpretations to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is described in Section 1153.14. If a case is appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, the BZA will hold a public hearing, and the BZA will make a determination based on the evidence presented by staff and the appellant at the public hearing if staff made an error in any written order requirement, decision, interpretation, or judgment or determination. And if there's disagreement with the BZA's decision, individuals may then appeal that to City Council, and that's why we're here tonight. Council's role is to determine if the BZA made an error in their written decision based upon the evidence discussed and presented at those meetings. And the council package that went out included the staff reports for the BZA meetings, as well as a memo covering the meeting this evening. So this is not a meeting where additional evidence should be presented or considered, and the decision should be made based upon the information the BZA had when they made their decision. Quick overview of the timeline of the appeal. This particular case started in April earlier this year, when our community service specialist received an inquiry asking about whether or not chickens are permitted to be kept on residential properties in the city. That inquiry triggered a visit to the property where chickens were discovered. And then on May 9th, the notice of violation was sent certified to the owner of record of the property, that property being H17 Kenosha, regarding the keeping of chickens on the property, which is not permitted per Section 1139.04.6, the keeping of pets and animals of the Kettering zoning code. There's some correspondence between the property owner and the code enforcement officer for that area of town in the middle of the month. Based on those discussions, it was determined that the property owner wanted to appeal the interpretation of the code. That appeal document was submitted on May 30th, and that appeal argued that chickens are permitted in Kettering as household pets as the code is written today. And then after we got that appeal, we set the public hearing for the July 14th Board of Zoning Appeals agenda. They held a public hearing that evening. At that meeting, there were some questions for staff that they wanted more information on, so they motioned to continue the case until the August 11th meeting. And then at the August 11th BZA meeting, the BZA ultimately motioned to uphold the zoning administrator's interpretation of the zoning code.
Are you finished with presentation?
No.
No.
Not yet. And then following that meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals, the appeal of the BZA decision was submitted to the clerk of council on August 22nd, and that appeal was placed on tonight's agenda, and we are having the public hearing tonight. So a quick overview of what is not being decided this evening. We're not deciding whether or not the city should or should not permit the keeping of chickens. We're not deciding whether or not chickens cause odor, noise, or other issues. Not deciding whether or not our residents support or oppose the keeping of chickens, and we're not deciding whether or not the appellant is deserving of keeping the chickens. What is being decided this evening is whether or not the BZA made an error in their written decision with regards to the keeping of chickens based upon the evidence they were presented at their meetings. So, there's a couple applicable zoning code sections that relate to the keeping of animals in general. The first, which I referenced earlier, is 1139.04.6, the keeping of pets and animals, and that section references Section 1159.02 of the zoning code, particularly the definition of household pets. So Section 1139.04.6 reads as follows. The keeping of animals is permitted subject to the following conditions. A, the only animals that may be raised, bred, or intentionally kept on any lot are those referred to below. Number one, household pets as defined in Section 1159.02. Definitions may be kept or fed on a premise provided that such animals satisfy the following conditions: they are not maintained for any commercial purpose, and they are not maintained in such numbers to constitute a kennel as defined in Section 1159.02. When the code was written, there were a couple of carve-outs that were created relating to the keeping of somewhat unique animals, as well as the keeping of some insects. One of those is the keeping of horses and ponies, which are permitted as long as the property meets the requirements of Section 1139.04.9, and beekeeping may occur on premises subject to the provisions of Section 1139.04.2. On the screen now is a screenshot from the zoning code of that section. The graphics on the right side were added as a part of the 2015 code rewrite in order to add clarity to this particular interpretation of the code, just intended to add clarity. And in the packet that went out, the ordinance that adopted the new zoning code, as well as an excerpt of that page, were included in the packet. The definition of household pet in Section 1159.02 is that is household pets are any dog, cat, or other species of animal, fowl, fish, amphibian, or reptile, which species is commonly deemed in this city to be tame and domesticated, or that is commonly accepted in this city to be as a pet kept inside of residence. That last sentence was also added as a part of the 2015 zoning code amendment, that a household pet is not kept for food production or agricultural value. So the ultimate question is, are chickens kept for food production or agricultural value? And staff believes the answer is yes. City Council has had some input on this item, either through presentations at work sessions or through memos that were sent out, kind of highlighting what the staff interpretations of the code are now as they relate to chickens in September of 2014, and July of 2016, and September of 2020, and May of 2024. In those discussions, there was not a push to change the code to allow the keeping of agricultural animals on residential properties in the city. Again, just a quick summary. What is under consideration this evening is, did the BZA make an error in their written decision regarding the keeping of chickens based upon the evidence provided in the appeal documents and at the public hearing? And why this isn't working? And again, are chickens kept for food production or agricultural value? Staff believes the answer is yes. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do you have any other exhibits that you wish to have entered into the record?
I just printed out the reports that were included with the council packets that went out.
Okay. And you are now finished with your presentation?
Yes. Are there any questions?
Hold on just a second here. Mr. Combs, do you have any questions? Mr. Holmesy? You do? Okay. I'll ask Mr. Holmesy to set, to go into the witness box, and you may come to the lectern, and you may ask your questions from the lectern.
I'm definitely a lot shorter, so I gotta bring this down.
Yeah.
Did the BZA have the full entirety code to review during that BZA hearing?
They had the pertinent code sections. It was included as an attachment that went out with the board packet.
So that will also include 1139 and enactment and interpretation of the code?
Which section?
1131.01, which is enactment and interpretation. John, one of the board members, referenced 1131.
Yeah, that was referenced at the meeting. I don't believe that section was included in the attachment that went out.
And 1159, rules of interpretation and definition was also included, correct?
That one, I believe, was.
All right. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Stay there for just a second, please. Do any council members have any questions for Mr. Holmesy?
Oh, he stays.
Mr. Sudditt?
What is...
I'm sorry. I want to make sure we get this right. You're asking this question for Mr. Combs, not for Mr. Holmesy.
I have a question for Holmesy.
Okay.
Should I go over there?
Not yet.
I don't think he has one for you.
You're fine right now. Mr. Holmesy, don't go anywhere. Okay. Is there anything that you wish to add?
Not...
Now, I guess there is an opportunity, Mr. Hamler, to help me out here.
I think if Mr. Sudditt has a question for Mr. Holmesy, now would be an appropriate time for him to ask that, and then Mr. Holmesy would have an opportunity for rebuttal after the questions from council to him.
My question is, what fowl would be considered a household pet? Are parakeets, budgies, lovebirds, are those considered foul in our code? Or in what situation would a fowl be accepted as a pet?
It depends on what definitions you look at. We don't define foul in our code. There are some definitions that are admittedly a little bit older. Definition of foul that included all birds, or any species of bird, but they particularly are focused on hens and things of that nature. But I believe that was included in the code just as, with the intent to refer to birds in general, so parrots, parakeets, indoor caged birds, and things of that nature.
Any other questions? Council? Okay. You may now step down.
Well, did Mr. Holmesy have anything in rebuttal?
He answered the question. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Combs, please proceed with your presentation. If you have any witnesses, they may now come down to the witness table and take a seat.
I have no witnesses.
Okay. You may proceed.
He's trying to plug in his...
Yeah.
There we go.
Is it on your screen?
It's on my screen.
My bill slide it over. My bill.
Do what?
Like you can drag it over maybe?
I'm not really good with computers. Anyone can offer me some help.
Yeah, I was going to say, you have a volunteer in the audience there.
All right.
He's as good as any of us.
Let's see here. Hold on.
I was a Patriot missile maintainer operator, not a computer...
There you go.
There we go.
How'd you do that?
I just dragged it over to the right here.
Drag and drop it.
Listen to Shane.
You're fine. Let's restart this here, if I can get my...I gotta look at it from far. All right. There you go. Just hit the spacebar to start.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir. I do have a packet at the end of my presentation to present. Packet has details of my speech, some other things that I will be reading. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Todd Combs, and I'm here to appeal the prior decision of case BZA 25-007 and the notice of violation V251509. I would like to thank you for your time and your consideration, considering this matter seriously. I have submitted a detailed written appeal packet. Tonight, I will summarize the key points. My focus is simple: the code as written, the errors that were made in applying it, and the legal proceedings that show why this decision must be reversed. Thank you for all you do and your willingness to listen with open minds from your residents. I'm a longstanding Kettering resident that left for the military and moved back when it was convenient, and I boast about this great city every time I get a chance. I tell you a little quick motto that I tell my son Seth: You don't know what you don't know, and you only know what they want you to know. If you want to know, if you want to get ahead in life, you need to research yourself to truly know. I'm here tonight to stand up for my rights and liberties, and what the city has authorized for years to keep my household pet fowl. I first want to share an agreement with the city. Numerous times, City Council has discussed authorizing chickens and made no amendments or excluding fowl in the code, or excluding the fowl in the code for numerous years. I stand behind that. I'm not here to argue for chickens or wild animals. We live in a residential area, so I agree we should not permit wolves, foxes, coyotes, chickens, Bengal tigers, Canadian geese, mountain lions, or any other dangerous beast on our properties. Yet I appreciate the city voting numerous times to allow for the domestication tame versions of these beasts, such as dogs, cats, and fowl, which is, let me read, 1131.03, which is rules of construction from the City of Kettering code. Interpretation and application of this zoning code are for the basic and minimum requirements for the protection of public health, safety, comfort, morals, convenience, prosperity, and welfare. The zoning code shall be literally interpreted in order to further its underlying purpose. The meaning of any and all words, terms, phrases of the zoning code shall be constructed in acceptance with Chapter 1159, Rules of Interpretation and Definition of the Zoning Code. The zoning code contains numerous graphics, pictures, illustrations, and drawings in order to assist the reader in understanding and applying the zoning code. However, to the extent that there is any inconsistency between the text of the zoning code and any other graphic, picture, illustration, or drawing, the text controls unless otherwise provided in the specific section. The zoning code text controls any tip or commentary. The zoning code contains numerous tips, sample calculations, reminders, and other commentary with margins. These tips and commentary are provided for the assistance of the reader, Kettering resident, and are not mandatory. Section titles are offered for convenience only. I do not want the code to be changed or amended. I just want the written code honored, in which my city council has voted for years. They understand what I just read, because they voted on that same provision. They didn't understand what I just read because they voted on that same provision in the code for years also. At this time, I would like to take a note for the record that there wasn't a discussion regarding Shelley Davis's investigation or determination if my pets were a wild chicken, a farm animal poultry, or a household pet fowl. I also want to point out she never went into my backyard to see for herself. How could she know if my pet fowl are indeed wild chickens? As they're playing the game catch the worm on the screen there, that's me throwing a ball to my pet dog, but I don't have a pet dog. I got pet fowl. I also noticed there was no discussion on the, on the investigation from the city inspector planner Doug regarding his interpretation of pet fowl. Yet, he decided to have them listed as the wild beast chicken. For the record, this city does not want wild animals in their city. I have witnessed a company that will drive out wild Canadian geese from the different ponds within our city limits. Yet, they keep the water fowl duck, the tame domesticated version. We all remember going to Duckville Park for fireworks, and I love my fireworks. And we all had to avoid the droppings from those Canadian geese when we went there. The city discussed it and paid a company to remove these wild geese. I've talked to the guy. However, they allowed the domesticated water fowl to remain and stay as people love to see them. So the city does authorize, authorize fowl within its limits, even to the point they voted numerous times to allow residents to own that fowl. Every definition, definition of fowl comes down to this. It's the wild chicken. You can see the date. The first date was August, and this is the second time I bought them on the screen. Every definition of fowl comes down to this. It's the wild chicken, which is the domesticated tame version, which is allowed. There's poultry, which you'll find that as the farm animal in section six eighteen, which is bred over the years to produce bigger meat places. And then, you have the fowl as tame domesticated. As you can see in my sideshow, I have numerous pictures of friends and family and ourselves interacting with our pets. I was looking forward to the discussion at the zoning board hearing on August eleventh, even after the July fourteenth hearing was extended. However, unfortunately, that discussion never came, July fourteenth. The one hour, fourteen minute, forty second mark, you can find that. The new chairperson informed us she had reviewed all the notes and all information provided, yet some things were left out. One of the board members asked about court cases. I brought a court case, and I wasn't allowed to present it. Does she need, did she need to understand the whole zoning code as chair of BZA? Yet, was my side even provided to her? She never said that. Why did the chairperson not correct the city on not including what the other household pet, other species of animal definition was when asked? She had no questions for either the city or me. In fact, she wanted zero discussion about the actual case. After the board said what they needed to say, no more discussion. I thought the board, like you guys are, was the judge. August eleventh, one hour, fifty-seven minutes, forty-eight seconds. Which is again why I've been so frustrated through this process and quite honestly what disappoints me. If the city truly wanted my particular type of household pet fowl removed, they could have simply done that numerous times. Instead, they added a deterrent in a form of a graphic to a city code with no description, and they call it the lawful code. I've already read eleven thirty, eleven, that one. Chapter eleven fifty-nine, Rules of Interpretation and Definition. For the purpose of this zoning code, the following terms, phrases, words, and their divisions shall have the meaning as set forth hereon. What's not inconsistent with context, words in the present tense include the future tense, and words, words in the plural manner include the singular number. Words in the singular number include the plural number. Words in the feminine include the masculine, and any of the masculine include the feminine. The words shall and must and will are mandatory, and may is permissive. Words not defound, defined, shall be given their common and ordinary meaning. And I apologize for reading something you guys already voted on and understand. Reference to chapters and sections or subsections are useless, or are unless otherwise specific. References to chapters, sections, or subsections of the zoning code. Defined terms remain defined terms whether or not it's capitalized. The text of this section shall control captions, titles, and maps. Within the zoning code section, preference, purpose, purpose, and findings, and the purpose and intent are included. Each purpose statement is intended as an official statement of legislation, findings, or purpose. The statements are legis- Try a mouth, I apologize.
Take your time.
These statements are legislated adopted together with the formal text of the zoning code. They are intended as a guide to the administration, administration, and the interpretation of the zoning code. Again, the BZA board and council tonight. And shall be treated in the same manner as all, or as other aspects of legislation. The written code overrides the graphic. During the hearing, the city provided no evidence that I, Todd Combs, had been in violation of this code. It was all opinions, and we deemed it so. But the code's law. Thank you, board, for taking the time to hear my appeal and my story. These pets mean so much to me and my family. I cannot overstate this. I'm a disabled US Kettering, or US combat veteran who suffers from suicidal thoughts. To have gotten my pet fowl. My, my pal, I fell, lifts my spirits as well as those of my family members. I tend to be a private person, yet I have to share my story with the community as I believe my rights as a Kettering residence are being violated. And that's not fair to me, my family, or any other Kettering residents. When I looked into getting my pets, I searched and I found the frequently asked question page in Kettering that said no chickens for, per Kettering code. Like I said, I love fireworks. And after the state of Ohio authorized fireworks in Ohio, city, in Ohio, City of Kettering did not. The City of Kettering has home state rule. Yet, if you search, when you get that code, it will clearly tell you what code you're violating if you set off fireworks in Kettering, but yet not for chickens. So me being me, you don't know what you don't know until you research it yourself. I wanted to find that code, and I never found it. I even asked Doug for the code. He never provided it to me. But I did find six eighteen. I opened up the website, clicked on the code, downloaded the code, and followed the instructions on how it works, starting from the top. I read about the zoning codes. I skimmed down until I got to eleven thirty-nine oh four oh six, Keeping of Pets and Animals, and I saw a picture of a rooster. Because remember, it's the interpretation of the reader at the time. I thought, due to most places don't want roosters. Then I skimmed down eleven fifty-nine oh two, definition notes. I passed a lot of graphics with titles and descriptions, yet none for that rooster and pig. And then I got to eleven fifty-nine oh one, Rules of Interpretation. Words with specific defined meanings are, are as follows. I went down to household pets and passed by dwelling and evergreen. And then got to household pets, I saw fowl. And I read no pet for food source. Then I went back to the pictures and I saw pig. Oh, that means I can't keep swine or poultry because those are the farm animals that the City of Kettering has already authorized us to own and harbor, but we can't have that type as a pet. Or those, or it means no roosters. My pet fowl are kept for companionship because my family has issues with other pets like dogs and cats, and frankly, fish are boring. I'm kind of a hyper person, and my fowl are a perfect pet for me. I don't keep my pets for a human feud source, nor an ultra cultural value. I met the conditions, so I went out and bought my Ohio native baby fowl chicks. I was shocked to find that Officer Davis stopped by and told me I was breaking the law. I was a common criminal. When I told her they were my pets, she said, "They can't be pets." And then shortly after, I got a violation in the mail. I emailed, emailed Doug three times, and I asked him for the code I broke. And he informed me, they, I informed him the air of my pets. Instead of helping me, he used the threat of fees per his voicemail. July fourteenth, the one hour, ten minute, forty eight second mark. The powers and the duties of the zoning administration. The zoning administration shall be appointed by the city manager of the City of Kettering and shall enforce the provisions of this zoning code and interpret the zoning map and the text according with the provision of this zoning code. Notice it didn't say pictures or graphics. I thought for sure Doug would tell me. He's the person that residents go to. He talked on the phone after my first email, and all he did was tell me. He skimmed my email, but I had to pay two hundred and fifty dollar non-refundable fee. That fee is up to seven hundred dollars now. This is how much these pets are worth to me. I have asked him for a ticket if I'm breaking the law. Again, he left me a voicemail, said there was a misunderstanding. If I don't comply with his order, I took that as a threat. Did I have household pet, household pet fowl, not chickens? At no time did anyone from the city inspect my pet fowl. How can you just say they are wild chickens if you don't investigate? The code permits fowl as pets. Kettering Code eleven fifty-nine oh two defines household pet as any dog, cat, or other species of animal. Fish, fowl, the frog one, and this one's special, reptile, which species is commonly deemed in the city to be tamed and domesticated, or that is commonly accepted in the city to be kept as a pet. I'm not going to insult your intelligence. All that last verbiage only reply to rep, only applies to reptile because city council has already voted on the wild beast they've determined to be tamed and domesticated. And again, the wolf becomes the dog, the Bengal tiger becomes the cat, the chicken and the geese become the fowl. This is very clear. The ordinance expressly includes fowl in the list of animals that may be kept as pets. Every authority, I can't pronounce it, but definition of the word, word fowl includes chickens. Meridim Webster defines fowl as a cocker, hen, or the domestic chicken. The Oxford English Dictionary defines fowl as birds of the order, and again, that's too confusing for me to say, which are chickens, ducks, geese, quail, and turkeys. There is no definition anywhere that of fowl that excludes the wild chicken. Therefore, the only way the board might have reasoned that these fowls are not included that they were not deemed tamed or domesticated. But as the documentation I provided shows, wild chickens, fowl have been considered tamed and domesticated animals for hundreds of years. Veterinarian authorities, researchers, and national organizations all confirm this. Perhaps the phrase, or that is commonly accepted in the city as a pet, was used as justification. But that would also be in error for two reasons. First, the word or means that only one of the conditions must be satisfied, either tamed and domesticated or commonly accepted. Second, the ordinance provides no definition on what is commonly accepted in the city as a pet. In such cases, generally accepting professional standards, professional standards must apply. And by those standards, there are ample evidence from veterinarians and the American Veterinary Medical Association and organizations like Pet Med and the Association of Avid, they are veterinarians, that chickens are indeed recognized and accepted as pets. So under both plain meaning and professional standards, my hens are household pets within the scope of eleven fifty-nine oh two. Errors in eleven, August eleventh decision. In the August eleventh decision, the board concluded that chickens are ultra culture animals and not pet, which was an error for several reasons. First, the ordinance already excludes animals kept for food production or ultra culture value. My hens are not kept for either purpose. They are pets. If I was keeping poultry for ultra culture purposes like meat or eggs, I might concede the assumption that they fall outside the pet definition, but that is not the case. I provided ample evidence that my hens are kept solely as pets while the board has failed to provide any evidence that they are not. Second, the board relied on captions and graphics added in two thousand and fifteen. But the code itself states the words of the section shall control for captions. Reliance on a caption instead of the words of the ordinance was a legal mistake. Eleven thirty-one dot oh three and eleven fifty-nine point oh one, July fourteenth hearing, one hour, eighteen minutes, eighteen seconds. Third, the board compared hens to cows or bulls being kept as pets. That analogy does not hold. Hens are small, quiet animals comparable in sizes and impact to parrots, rabbits, or ferrets, all which are permitted. Well, I don't know about the ferrets. Fourth, no reports from Shelley Davis and Doug Denise to issue the V twenty-five zero one five oh nine. Fifth, per Ryan, this violation was the removal of chickens, not kennels. I do not have chickens. I have household pet fowl. Finally, even within your own proceeding, board member Kim Havestack referred to my hens as pets during the July fourteenth hearing, one hour, twenty-five minutes in the twenty-five second mark. That acknowledgement aligns with the plain meaning of the ordinance. And mentioned after August eleventh hearing, he used pictures, two hour, zero minutes, fifty seconds. Ohio case law requires favoring of the property owner. Here, the ordinance does not state, does not say chickens are prohibited. Instead, it says household pets include fowl. Wild chickens are the domesticated fowl, become the domesticated fowl. If there's any doubt, the immunity must be resolved in my favor according to Ohio Supreme Court. This violation was never cens, censurational. The violations issued against me allege I was keeping animals in violation of the zoning code. At no point did the code, city provide factual evidence that my hens were being kept for food production or ultra culture purpose, or that they created a nuisance. I showed them how I dispose of the eggs so they don't smell in the trash can. Now I gotta put them in the kitchen sink because I found out I was using it as a food source for animals and not humans. Because I want to be honorable and do the right thing. This case, the city's case relied mostly initially on assumptions. The assumptions that chickens are always ultra culture or that they must be livestock. Yet, that is called poultry, not foul, fa, not fowl. As found in section six eighteen dot one four, wild or exotic animals of the City of Kettering General Offense Code. But assumptions are not evidence. The code requires proof that an animal is not a household pet or that it's being used for a food or an ultra culture purpose. That proof was never offered. I have a barn in my backyard. Does that mean I live on a farm now? Is that's what you're telling me? On the contrary, I have submitted letters of support from my neighbors, documentation, veterinarians, authoritative research showing that hens are commonly recognized as pets. These are facts. The board's decision by contracts rest, rest- The board's decision by contracts rests on opinions and analogies. That is not significant grounds to uphold a violation against a citizen. Reliance on a caption, opinion, and process errors. A second major issue is the board's decision was built on reliance on captions and opinions instead of the controlling text of the ordinance, July 14th. One hour, seventeen minutes, twelve seconds. August 11th, one hour, fifty-five minutes. The code itself states the words of the section shall control in two places, not captions. Yet in my case, captions and graphics added in 2015 were treated as if they carried the same weight as law. This is not consistent with the rules of statutory interpretation. If officials had in fact intended to ban pet chickens or fowl, they could have amended the ordinance itself, eliminating any question or immunity, but they did not. The city's even provided how many times they discussed. And nothing's been done to the code. Yet to me, that picture was a rooster. Or could it mean not to use a food source since that graphic of a pig was also added? Yet the city had no evidence of me using my pet fowl. I asked Ryan during the hearing and both answers were no. Prior to issuing the violation. In addition, comments were made in the hearing suggesting that I should have called the city to ask for permission before keeping my hens. With respect, that undermines the very purpose of publishing a code. That code is written so residents can read it, understand it, and follow it. Citizens should not be penalized for doing exactly what the ordinance allows, especially when the plain text includes fowl as a household pet. I did reach out to the city and was told to appeal to the BZA for $250. During the August 11th hearing, it was stated by the city that the city council had multiple conversations on chickens. Yes, we don't want wild chickens in Kettering. City council has voted to protect our residents for years to allow household pet fowl. And since they understand what the verbiage means, I interpret them not making a decision to amend the code not to exclude fowl like they did in Evergreen pertaining to cactus. Yet in 2015, a picture was added without even talking about it to the public. Because it's probably an expensive process to do. Taxpayer money could be utilized at other places. Finally, they were clear, areas in the process testimony relied on personal opinions and assumptions, not the written code. Evidence was introduced by staff after the record had been closed and a board member specifically referred to my hens as pets. A statement that did not make it into the official minutes, but was captured on audio. Each of these factors further demonstrates the decision was not based on proper application of the ordinance. July 14th, fifty-nine minutes, fifty-seven seconds. Fairness, consistency, and rule of law. At its core, this case is about fairness and the rule of law. The ordinance is the same for every citizen. It says that household pets include fowl that are tamed and domesticated or otherwise accepted as pets. That standard cannot be applied differently depending on what, on whether the animal is a parrot, a rabbit, or a hen. To allow subjective preferences to override the plain language of an ordinance is to create inconsistency and uncertainty in the law. Ohio courts have been clear that citizens must be able to rely on the words of the ordinance. If city council wants to prohibit chickens, it has the authority to amend the ordinance. But until then, the code as written must be controlled. My fowl meet that definition of household pets under 1159-02. That should end the inquiry. In closing, respectfully submit that the violation against me was never supported by evidence and the board's decision was based on assumptions, captions, personal bias, analogies rather than actual text of the ordinance. The facts are straightforward. The ordinance expressly includes fowl and every definition of fowl has its mother animal, chicken. My hens are tame and domesticated. When I come home from work, I open my gate and they're right there. First thing, I don't even go see my wife. I go see my pets. I go straight there and they're waiting by the gate for me. It's so uplifting. That's what my pets do for me. Same thing is when you pull in your driveway and the dog jumps in your bay window and hopefully they don't break it and they're wagging their tail and then you got marks all over the window because the dog's doing that. It's the same thing. My hens are tame and domesticated. They are not kept for food or ultra culture. There is no evidence to the contrary. Ohio Supreme Court proceedings require an meeting to be resolved in favor of the property owner. The decision relied on captions and opinions which the law says cannot override the ordinance text. This case is not about preferences, opinions, or biases. It's about what the ordinance actually says and how Ohio law requires it to be applied. For those reasons, I respectfully ask the board reverse its prior decision and recognize what past city council members have voted on for decades and authorize me to keep my household pet fowl. I am done. Oh, I'm not.
I only, I only have one. Can I just ask it? How many chickens are kept on the property?
I have... What was the question again?
How many chickens?
I have zero.
Are kept on the property?
Zero. I have eighteen household pet fowl.
Thank you.
I actually have two. Did the Board of Zoning Appeals ask you questions about where the fowl live? Do they live inside the house or outside? Did BZA ask that?
No. BZA didn't ask me, to my recollection, any questions on August 11th. And Ryan, do you remember, or Tom, did they ask? I don't think they asked. They asked you guys the questions. They asked city staff. They didn't ask me a single question.
And did they talk about at that meeting, the definition of a kennel?
Yes, briefly, but it wasn't too much. But again, you have in the kennel definition, I have a great memory, apologize. And the kennel definitions for cats and dogs, and they added the word rabbit. Rabbit is also not found in household pet fowl. But then in number four, it has other household pets. Again, other household pets also is defined in the city ordinance, household pet. Fowl is by itself and was not included in the definition of kennel. And the regular definition of kennel for Kettering, it was an established place to use for business. But yet, the Webster Dictionary says a kennel is for a boarding place for cats and dogs. What I personally have, if you want to get silly with it in a sense, is a fowl habitat. It's sort of like an aquarium for fish. If I had 200 fish, do I need a kennel for them? No, because they wouldn't live in a kennel. They would die. So for my particular pet, it's not listed underneath the definition of kennel.
I was, I was just, I was wondering if BZA had any discussion about, you know, one of the conditions to have a, you know, pets is they are not maintained in such numbers to constitute a kennel. And eighteen seems to fall above that threshold. So I was just wondering if BZA discussed that part of it.
If you looked at some of the pictures, my hens are no bigger than a football. They're small. They pretty much stay in a space like this today. And in a very clean sanitary environment. They technically don't even need that to begin with.
Seen any? Okay, I do have one. The picture of the fowl or the chicken or the hen or the rooster. When did you first see that?
I first saw that in, I want to say, April 2024. Actually, May. I joined a Facebook site and learned a lot from different people. And then I started with the time to read the code. And I do not process things fast, but I process things. And as I went through and went down the code, when I realized I could own them, it took me about four or five months, and then I went and purchased them. Because that's, to me, it was a deterrent. It wasn't the code. It wasn't the law. It's a picture. It's the only picture in the zoning code that doesn't have a title, a figure, or anything. It stands out. And to me, that, attention to detail. That one little detail made it look suspicious to me and that made me look harder. And then when I saw where it says text controlled graphics, then that takes that graphic right off the page because the text rules over the graphics.
Okay. Do you have anything that you'd like to add at this point?
No, I just keep honoring what you guys have voted on for years.
And do you have any other exhibits that you'd like to have?
I will pass any, I'll pack it.
Okay. Give them to Mrs. Haslett. Okay. It's now time for public comments. You may not ask questions of city council or expect city council to comment. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Each person may speak only once. Please do not repeat material that has already been covered. Each person speaking will be subject to cross-examination by the parties. So Mr. Combs and Mr. ... Don't go anywhere. Ryan Holmesy, don't go anywhere.
I did tell you I was hyper.
It's all right. Before you begin, you must state your name and address and state whether or not you took the oath. We did swear in a group of people at the beginning and I don't think anyone else has come in who wishes to speak, who has not taken the oath. Is there anyone? Okay, all right, I will need to, anybody else who plans to speak or would like to speak and who has not taken the oath? Okay. Let me... Get a copy of it. Okay, stand up. Right in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before city council will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, first I'd like to call anyone in favor of the decision?
Can I sit down?
You may sit down, yes, yes. Who is in favor of the decision? That's the one. Oh, okay, all right. Okay. Please stand if you wish to speak in favor of the decision. Okay, I don't see anyone. When each speaker is done or your five minutes have expired, go to the witness table and from there we can ask you questions. Or Mr. Combs and Mr. Holmesy can. Okay? So, you want to stand up so I can recognize those who are opposed to the decision? Okay, we'll start right here on the right. Remember to start with your name and address.
Hi, my name's Emily Kine. My address is 641 Peach Orchard Road.
You may proceed.
Okay. I am here to voice my support for Mr. Combs's position that his household chickens are indeed pets. I wanted to reference the code specifically. As was repeated a few times, any dog, cat, or other species of fowl, et cetera, commonly deemed in the city to be tame and domesticated. Fowl is mentioned but not defined. However, this commonly refers to chickens linguistically. In fact, I'm not sure what else it could really refer to. If you say fowl, it's pretty much chicken. And that would, by being in the code, imply that in certain situations, chickens could be indeed considered pets. It also says that any fowl considered in the city to be tame and domesticated. Hens, from my personal experience growing up with hens, can definitely be tame. And in fact, all chickens here are indeed called domesticated chickens. So chickens are inherently domesticated. Because of the "or" statement after that, city to be tame and domesticated or commonly accepted to be kept inside of a residence. It doesn't have to be in a residence. It just has to be either tame and domesticated or kept inside of a residence. Finally, the household pet is not kept for food production or agricultural value. Based on Mr. Combs's statement in a Dayton Daily News article that I read prior to this, he states that he does not even consume the eggs that his chickens produce. He cooks them and gives them directly back to the chickens. He buys his own eggs. So I don't see a situation in which he uses his chickens in any way for food production or agricultural value. I can't really see him eating them either considering how much he seems to love them. Finally, I don't believe, as Mr. Combs stated, that a picture of a crossed out chicken is citable or referenceable legislation. I don't think that's valid legislation. I would imagine that the text in the code itself would be the only legislation that you can actually interpret if it doesn't have any kind of title or caption or description. So with that said, the code, any fowl deemed in the city to be tame and domesticated, that all applies. It doesn't have to be kept inside of a residence. And it's not kept for food production or agricultural value. So I don't see any situation in which Mr. Combs's domesticated chickens could be anything other than a household pet.
Okay, thank you. Could I direct you to the witness stand? Mr. Holmesy or Mr. Combs, do either of you wish a chance to ask the speaker questions? Either one of you do not?
No.
Okay, you may, you may be excused. Thank you. Okay, next speaker. Yes, ma'am, in the blue and white.
I misunderstood. I'm going to speak in opposition.
Okay.
I am going to speak.
In favor of the decision, yeah, okay, all right. I think we'll go finish with those who are opposed and then we'll take them. Okay, yes.
All righty. My name is Tyler Scott. I live at 2319 Rockwell Court. Just going through here, looking at the City of Kettering General Offenses Code. It's going to be Section 618 dot 14. In Section A, it says that no person shall market wholesale or retail any wild, this is pertaining to wild or exotic animals. Essentially, it says you can't sell fur. But in Section B, it says that no person shall own or harbor any wild or exotic animal and exceptions to this prohibition And exceptions to this prohibition are touring animal exhibitions, circuses, veterinarians, educational research facilities, or aid for handicapped persons or persons licensed or permitted by the state. Mr. Combs has stated that he is a veteran. And you could argue for that, that he could be using that for, you know, PTSD reasons and such as he stated. But also in the section below that, it says, animals which may be owned or harbored are those animals native to the farm, such as horses, cattle, swine, and poultry, as well as domesticated cats and domesticated dogs.
The code that you need to cite must be one that's under discussion and debate today.
Okay.
That's additional new information.
Okay. I apologize. That's, that's all I had to say was for that.
Thank you. I know we had another person who was in support of the decision. We'll figure out.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Haake, 816 Kenosha Road. And I swore the oath in without the information you needed. I'm here in support of Todd. When he informed my mother and I, who live across the street, that he had new pets, it wasn't that he had new farm animals. He had new pets, he had new chickens. And I'm not going to be citing any specific codes. I'm going to be appealing, hopefully, to your better natures and your basic compassionate response that pets are members of our family. We treat them as members of our household. I've never seen him treat these animals as though they were livestock, as though they were something to be consumed, something to be sold. I've seen him treat them like family. My experience with Todd as a neighbor and with his pets has been as such. It has been as someone who is taking care of family members, someone who is incorporating it into the daily life of his children, of his spouse, even of us in the neighborhood, introducing us to his new pets. I do think it's being purposely up to, to try to say that these are animals that he is trying to make production out of. He has never attempted to do so, as far as I'm aware. He has just opened up his home to more livelihood. That is all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Holmesy and, and Mr. Combs, do either of you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, you may sit in the witness box.
I have a quick question.
Have you ever seen me or Seth or any of the other neighbors walk our pets?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you may be excused. Thank you. Let the record show that the, the witness spoke in opposition to the decision. Okay, now we will go back up to those in favor of the decision. And the lady in the blue and white.
Thank you, counsel, I appreciate it. My name is Constance Myers. I live at 809 Rock Hill Avenue, Kettering 45429. First of all, I would like to thank Mr. Combs for his military service to our great country. That service has caused him to seek medical treatment for, as a result. Evidently, professionals have recommended he be aided by a comfort pet. He has indicated that based on his allergies to dogs, cats, and other common pets, he opted to select chickens as they do not negatively, excuse me, negatively affect his allergic conditions. Mr. Combs' interpretation of the zoning ordinance is that the wording does not specifically prohibit chickens as a pet. Although the zoning ordinance does not exclude chickens in word form, it does show an illustration of the chickens surrounded by a circle with a line through it. The symbol, that symbol is basically a universal symbol that indicates when something is not permitted, commonly known as a no symbol. In this case, certain chickens, or concerning chickens, the zoning ordinance, based on that no symbol means no chickens. There are two, here are two examples of signs and I think that everyone will understand what they mean. They have no wording, but this is what they are. In his appeal application, Mr. Combs has indicated that per the zoning ordinance definition of his pet, his fowl are not kept for food production or agricultural value. However, the eggs are being used in a way to maintain the chickens. They are in fact being used for food production or agricultural value. And that is defined as a farm pet, not, or farm animal, not a pet. Mr. Combs is not being deprived of using his property house a pet, but because of his allergies, he is requesting the standards of the zoning ordinance be relaxed. To relax or vary the standards of the zoning ordinance, it must be based on a hardship of the property, not based on the hardship of a property owner. Should counsel determine the chickens are considered a pet, other issues must be addressed. In this case, if this case is approved, the other property owners within the city would have the right to have chickens as pets until the amendment to a zoning ordinance would be adopted to specifically prohibit chickens in word form. As this would be a timely process, and all instances of the placement of pet chickens would then be permitted to continue until after the adoption of the amendment, as these properties would then be considered legally non-conforming. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum of five pets per single-family property. More than five would be defined as a kennel. Mr. Combs would then be required to reduce that number to no more than five. It is my understanding that his chickens are kept in the rear yard of the property and housed in a chicken coop-type accessory building. Pets are to be housed inside the primary house on the property, so a variance would be required. Further, accessory buildings must satisfy standards to be architecturally compatible to the primary house. I have no way of knowing if that is the issue, but the city would have to be responsible for that determination. Additionally, there are medical concerns. Histoplasmosis is a condition caused by exposure to soil contaminated with bird or bat droppings. The fungus can become airborne when the soil is disturbed, such as during plowing or cleaning of a chicken coop. This condition can result in blindness if not treated. However, it is not curable as the damage it causes is permanent. I feel compelled to offer this concern as a good friend of mine was diagnosed with this condition many, many years ago and as a result of visiting his grandparents' farm as a young man. His vision abilities were impacted and after complicated surgery, he has been able to maintain his vision without further complication from the condition.
Excuse me, I think I need to interrupt you. Once again, this is not a question of, that's contained in this decision.
I understand.
It was not entered into the evidence at the time.
I understand. I'm going to just finish it up real quickly. Based on the points I presented, I'm asking counsel to enforce the adopted standards in the zoning ordinance to protect the property rights of the majority of Kettering property owners.
Your time is up. Okay. Your time is up.
Rather than the one.
Sorry. Did anyone have any questions at this witness? Okay, you may be excused. All right. Counsel, any council members have any additional questions? None? Okay. At this point then, the public hearing is closed. As you indicated earlier in the evening, the council will take up the question and vote at a next, at a subsequent council meeting.
Did I hear that right?
All right.
It's being till the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or a future meeting. I can't guarantee it's the next meeting. If we've reached a decision by then, we will have it at that point.
Will I be, would I get notified?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Do you want to add anything? No?
No, I think, Mayor, you stated it correctly. And when council is ready to make a decision, it would appear on the agenda. So if you watch the council agendas, you will see when the decision is going to be made.
Okay. Thank you. And thank all of you for coming this evening. You're welcome to the stage at the end of the meeting. I suspect you may have other things to do tonight, though.
So when you're going downstairs, please walk very quietly because we can hear everything up here in the chambers.
Okay, back to the regular agenda here. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak on any of the other legislative items tonight? Okay. Not seeing anyone else. Just for the record, I need to add that if you do want to speak, you must limit your time to five minutes. Start with your name and address. And limit your speech to five minutes. I think I said that, so, okay. All right. We will now move to ordinances and second reading.
Your Honor, I do, I do have an ordinance to enact Section 606 dash 20, dot 27 of the codified ordinance regarding failure to comply. It is requested by the police department and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. You're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of council. According to a recent court decision, under Ohio Revised Code Section 2921.331A, as currently written, a charge of failure to comply with the lawful order of a police officer should only be used for a person who was operating a motor vehicle at the time of the violation. However, failure to comply with the lawful order of a police officer can occur in a wide range of situations not involving the operation of a motor vehicle. Such behavior undermines and is a threat to both public safety and officer safety and must be deterred. Enactment of Section 606.27 will address this issue and will help protect public safety and officer safety. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Call it a roll.
Mrs. Fisher? Yes. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in second reading, repealing Chapter 705 of Part 7 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Kettering. This is requested by the police department and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Handler?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the title indicates, this ordinance will repeal Chapter 705 concerning alarm systems. Chapter 705 was enacted to present, prevent, excuse me, the excessive cost and misuse of City of Kettering emergency services caused by excessive false alarms. The alarm systems that are the subject of Chapter 705 are those that seek to alert the police to unauthorized entries into homes and businesses. Chapter 705 requires alarm users to obtain a permit from the Kettering Police Department and authorizes the assessment of fees for repeated false alarms. New trends and updated security technology have rendered older alarm systems and technologies less popular. Chapter 705 addressed excessive false alarm issues typically seen in those older alarm systems. The newer security options and systems do not present those same issues and render Chapter 705 unnecessary, which is why staff is recommending the chapter be repealed.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. And now move to resolutions?
Your Honor, I have a resolution accepting the rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying same to Montgomery County and Green County auditors. This is requested by the finance director. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor, members of council. This is routine annual legislation accepting the city's property tax rates. It is required by Montgomery County, Green County, which there's a portion of Kettering in Green County, and by the Ohio Revised Code. And we're required to do it each year. This does not represent any new or increased millage rates. So for the general fund, there is 3.5 mil voted outside the 10 mils. General fund, it's a total of six mils. Three separate millages, 3.5 in the general fund that's voted, 2.2 in the general fund unvoted, that's inside the 10 mils, or called the inside mil, millage, and .30 unvoted inside the 10 mil limitation for the police pension fund. Additionally, there is a .48 voted, meaning outside the 10 mil limitation, for the bond retirement fund. Those relate to the, you may recall, the previous park levy. So when you look at those in total, that is 6.48 mils. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
I have a resolution accepting national opioid litigation settlements with eight opioid manufacturers as negotiated through the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. This is requested by the law department and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. You've approved a number of these types of resolutions. This resolution accepts the national opioid litigation settlements with eight opioid manufacturers as negotiated through the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. I won't read all of, all eight of them, but that is included in your package. It also authorizes us to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. The settlement was negotiated through the Ohio Attorney General's Office under the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding regarding the pursuit and use of potential opioid litigation settlement funds. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution adopting a cybersecurity program. This was requested by the Administrative Systems Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. House Bill 96, which, which was recently signed into law, requires legislative authority of municipalities to adopt a cybersecurity program. While we have, we have had a cybersecurity program for several years, this resolution serves to formalize its adoption. Our program itself will be a combination of the Center for, Center for Internet Security Controls Framework, the FBI's CIGIS security policy and other cybersecurity-related obligations that the city is expected to meet. We will, we have and will continue to update our program periodically to keep pace with current best practices. And we'll update future versions of cybersecurity frameworks and policies. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Pressing your button. Okay. All right, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing an additional expenditure of funds for streetlight maintenance. Our estimated cost is $150,000. We have budgeted $35,000. It's requested by engineering department and I move for its approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our maintenance contract for the maintenance of streetlights with Security Fence Group for this year has exceeded the original purchase order amount of $24,000, primarily due to an abnormally high number of vehicular collisions with our street lighting system. With pending repairs, this purchase order amount should be increased to $150,000 to cover
be increased to $150,000 to cover expenses that were already incurred and some buffer to, hopefully, no more streetlights get hit, but will hopefully cover us through the remainder of the year. So we, when possible, we do seek insurance reimbursement for any streetlights that get hit. It doesn't always happen that way, but we do seek it as possible, and it would encourage folks to drive carefully. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Sturtel Coney USA Inc. for replacement of a heavy-duty lift located at the Vehicle Maintenance Center. The estimated cost is $350,000. The amount budgeted is zero, and this is requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. The VMC, or Vehicle Maintenance Center, in our Public Service Department, lost the use of both of our in-ground lifts that we have in one of our large truck bays last year due to equipment failure. These lifts were original to the building addition that added the large truck bays in 1984, and both of them were operated by the same hydraulic system. In April of this year, we did purchase a mobile column lift, which can be moved around the bay. However, there is inadequate space to use the mobile lift in one bay and have another mobile lift in the other bay, if we can fit two trucks. So therefore, we are recommending the replacement of the old in-ground lift in order to utilize both bays of this wing of the VMC that was built again in 1984. This one's a little unique in that because the Vehicle Maintenance Fund is what we call an internal service fund, we will be depreciating this equipment and spreading the cost of the purchase over the life of the equipment, and will be included in vehicle charge, garage charge, chargebacks to individual departments. So for that reason, it is an unbudgeted expenditure, but we do not need a supplemental appropriation because of its categorization of an internal service purchase. It was confusing, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. Estimated cost is $238,300, and as requested by the Finance Department, I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. There are several supplemental appropriations that we need. First is related to the Law Department, a supplemental appropriation of $60,000, requested for the Law Department operating budget. This is to be used for the recodification project that we have begun and for outside legal services that we're expecting through the remainder of 2025. Earlier in the evening, just a minute ago, you heard Mr. Bergstresser talk about streetlight repair, and you authorized us to enter into a contract to conduct that activity. This resolution would appropriate the funds to actually accomplish that. So that is $123,500 from the streetlight maintenance account due to an abnormally high number of vehicle collisions. Additionally, there is a request for a reclassification within the budget, not additional funding, and that is $54,800 is requested to reclass billing service fees from the Fire Station Debt Service Fund to the EMS, Emergency Medical Services Fund. EMS revenues, our EMS revenues have generated excess cash in the Fire Station Debt Service Fund, and in order to remedy that situation, the percentage of EMS revenues and billing service fees allocated between the EMS Fund and the Fire Station Debt Service Fund is proposed to be changed from a 25-75 allocation to 80-20 allocation. You may recall, we first pay the debt for the fire stations, but because of those excess revenues, we'll be able to spend those excess revenues on EMS activities. Chief, do you have anything to add or clarify?
This was initiated basically due to COVID. We switched the debt services to the EMS Fund Services Ratio because we were afraid COVID was going to hurt our alarm numbers. So we temporarily changed that percentage. We then, after an analysis, switched it back to the original 75-25. But in that time, that gap, before we switched it back, there was an increased revenue on the debt services side that we can't carry. So we're just switching that back over.
We would be glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding these supplemental appropriations, and recommend their approval.
Doesn't seem to be any questions. Go ahead, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay, we have one ordinance in first reading this evening. Who's reading that?
Ms. DuVall.
The ordinance is to amend the traffic control map in the traffic control file of the City of Kettering regarding Lincoln Park Boulevard and to repeal Sections 1F, G, and H of Ordinance Number 3138-84 and Section 1D of Ordinance Number 1775-68. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and it is in first reading.
Okay, Mr. Bergstresser.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance in first reading for this evening. We've had ongoing issues at the intersection of Lincoln Park Boulevard and Delane Avenue near Fairmont High School in relation to the visibility of the roadway and parking concerns on that section of Lincoln Park. The existing on-street park, through research, we found that the existing on-street parking restrictions do not match with legislation. So therefore, the above modifications to the city ordinances alleviate these concerns at Lincoln Park and Delane, and also address discrepancies with legislative restrictions to the ones that are signed in the field. So basically, we are reconciling what is currently signed in the field with what should be officially legislated so that we can enforce the no parking zones officially. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Ms. DuVall?
I actually do. Was this prompted by complaints from the neighborhood, or did the police notice, you know, issues or?
My understanding, it's a combination of both. You know, obviously, we get a lot of traffic from schools, especially student parking in the rear parking lot near the Trent, also the front parking lot as well. So my understanding, it came from both a combination of staff observations and resident concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. First reading. Certifications and petitions. Mrs. Haslam, do we have any this evening?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, great. Turn now to the city manager's report and community update.
Yes, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, Thursday, September 11, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Lathrum Senior Center, we will be continuing our effort to get citizen input on Kettering's update to its comprehensive plan. So we want individuals to attend, review early recommendations that were developed by the steering committee and the consultants and the staff from public input and technical research that's been conducted. This will be an opportunity to explore how key areas of the city could change and share feedback. And you can register by using the QR code that's on the screen. Registration is not mandatory. It just helps us give an idea how many people we're preparing for. It's also Hispanic Heritage Month, or almost Hispanic Heritage Month, and our Board of Community Relations is encouraging everyone to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month September 15 through October 15. There is an opportunity for students to get engaged in learning more about Hispanic heritage, and then we're calling on all Kettering area students to participate in a poster context that is, actually, not all area's students, K through 5th graders. So, Mr. Sullivan, not your students, maybe. And actually, I'm wrong about that. There'll also be an art reimagine contest for 6th through 12th graders, and how you can participate is on the screen. There'll be a prize for each contest winner. We like to highlight community events at each one of these reports, and I want to take the opportunity to highlight that Eco Fest is coming, September 20, 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. This is a free community festival at Lincoln Park and Phrase Pavilion, and lots of fun activities, food trucks, an opportunity for us to focus on how to advance sustainability in our community. September 22 through 28, we're trying to encourage healthy lifestyles in our community. We want people to bring a favorite fitness buddy to a land-based group exercise class. Any exercise class I do is land-based. So come join us at one of our fitness centers and bring a friend, this is a buddy, to work out for free. And we encourage folks to do that. If you don't know it, we have some of the best fitness instructors and fitness facilities in the Miami Valley.
To those of you who are trying to figure out what land-based was, Jackie and I decided it was water.
Anything but water.
Not water.
Anything but water.
Yes.
We had this same discussion down here.
Well, that's what I sort of thought our audience might be having the same thought.
I wasn't talking about aquatics. I was talking about whether vertical
Yeah, the bungee thing.
... abilities. So we also want to highlight, October 11, we are having our ever, always popular Shred Day and recycling event. This is an opportunity to bring your unwanted paper, styrofoam, and now electronics to be properly recycled. We have a number of partners on this. Montgomery County is a partner. Day Air Credit Union is a significant partner, and Solvida is a big partner in this. There is information on the screen about acceptable electronics that can be recycled, but certainly, if anyone has any questions, please call our sustainability manager, Don Kirchner, who leads these activities at the number on the screen. As you know, lead in homes can be detrimental, and if you own a home built before 1978, there's a possibility that you have lead in it. And we have programs where you may be eligible for home repairs to address lead-based paint issues. There are income requirements to become eligible for this. This is a program where we've received funds from the State of Ohio. It's called the Lead Safe Ohio Program, and it provides lead prevention and mitigation for single-family homes constructed before 1978 and household incomes under $80,000 for a family of two or $100,000 for a family of four. Please contact our team if you're interested in pursuing some of these lead paint prevention initiatives. Your Honor, that's my community update. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Greason? Okay. At this point, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come down and speak about any issue that might be on your mind, you may do so at this point. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have any comments that are not about the legislation, whoops, I pulled the wrong script up here. This is on any topic you want to talk about, so come on down. That's that one.
Good afternoon. My name's Ralph Haynes. If some of you are familiar with my face here.
Good to see you.
I live at 2949 East Cunningham Lane in Kettering. And I was here a couple of months ago complaining about the filth issue in my neighborhood. At this point, two months later, the filth is still there. I don't understand. I have never been given any feedback if they're doing anything about this situation. I have not been given any information about it. As I drove by coming here this evening, there was about 10 or 12 bags of garbage laying in his driveway because he won't pay a garbage bill. He does not subscribe to garbage pickup. My sister, two weeks ago, caught him putting his garbage in her cans across the street. We're sick of this over there. We need you people to please do something with this situation. This has been going on for 10 years. That's unbelievable.
Sir, one of your other neighbors has been in very close contact with us as we've been incrementally working on the problem. And so what we need to do is maybe get your email address, so that way, when Mr. Chakowsky sends out the updates to the other neighbor, you can get updated as well.
Yeah, he was keeping me updated for a while, but then I haven't seen him in three or four weeks, so I don't know what situation.
So that nice-looking young man right there with the glasses, we need, if you can get your email to him, that would be fantastic.
I certainly will, and I thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Here comes another.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Nevin Smith. I reside at 2416 Vale, and I'm here today because there was an insult done to myself. There was an insult done to this body. There was an insult done to our residents today at the Board of Elections. I have been campaigning here in Kettering to hopefully be on the Kettering City Council. I have walked to dozens and dozens of homes. I've been talking to hundreds of people, and I collected 239 signatures. Per our charter, we need 200, and I turned them into the Board of Elections before our deadline. And as part of this process, I made a public records request, and it seemed like they were going to say that it was not going to make it. And during this process, I've consulted with candidates. I've consulted with former board members. I've consulted with people who are holding office currently, and all of them seem to have this consensus that we could potentially go out, get affidavits, and get these signatures cured, because within the group that they threw out, there were 14 Kettering residents who were valid electors, but they could not match their signatures to what they had on record. Over the holiday weekend we just had, instead of being down at Holiday at Home, I was driving through the city, using the notaries that we'd attained, and through the week, in order to find those people and get their voices heard. On September 4, I went to the Board of Elections, and I spoke with the director, and I turned in those petitions, and he told me to my face, in the presence of two Board of Elections employees, that he would not be using them in consideration for certification, and additionally, that he would not even inform the board that these people in our community had even signed the affidavits. I went to the board this morning to protest, and just as he said, Jeff Razabeck, that he would not present to them, and they made a vote without the consideration of our Kettering residents. I filed an appeal, and I hope to hear more on this situation, but insofar as our own city and what power we have, this is not the first time that the Board of Elections has inserted themselves into our affairs. As you recall, in our last election, Mr. Bose was out of alignment with our charter, and what I did not know until very recently is that the current director did not feel so inclined to even inform him. And as I'm sure many of you are aware, this is not a unique situation. Our candidates within our city have had to grapple and struggle with this sometimes combative director. So I would suggest that us as a city start considering what we can do in our charter to codify and formalize our nominating petition process, because the director said that there is no is no law that compels him to require him to look at affidavits or even show them to the Board of, to, excuse me, if I'm running out of breath, it's because I've been up since 7 o'clock this morning. Basically, there's nothing codified, and it seems to me from my exploration that most of the things that go on around our election certification process is handshake or just implied consent. And if there's a bad actor within it, then there's really not a whole lot you can do, because the board isn't even legally required to even give you a second pass in terms of looking at your petitions. So what we can do as a city is we can put forward suggestions in our charter of how the Board of Elections can actually handle our candidates going forward.
Thank you for coming and presenting that. It is a concern. There seem to be increasing numbers of these types of situations. We haven't looked at it, it's not really in our purview, but perhaps we can have some discussion with our law director and find out if there's any way that we can have any bearing on some of these issues. It's perplexing, and I appreciate you trying to run. Hopefully, your appeal will work out and you'll end up on the ballot. If not, don't give up. Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. All right. With that, we will go to council reports. Mrs. Fisher, do you want to start?
So Mr. Smith had mentioned Holiday at Home, and what a wonderful, beautiful fall-like weekend it was, but this coming week is going to be in the 80s again, and 88 next Sunday is what the news said before I came here to council. So I want to remind all of our residents that the splash pad that is over at Pullen Farm is going to be open until the 21st of September, so it is still on and operating. So get those kiddos out there and get them running around, because it wears them down, so they go to bed early and they're ready for school the next day. That's all I have, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll keep my comments brief, but I think we're all going to say Holiday at Home was fantastic this year, the weather, the whole event, the parade. We got a nice letter from Jennifer Hart, she's the president of Holiday at Home, and she was thanking the Police Department, the Parks Department, Fire Department, and everybody that puts that on. Christ United Methodist, they let us use their space, we're using the Government Center parking lot, we're using Lincoln Park, so it was very sprawling, but Jennifer Hart also said it was one of the most well-attended events, and if you were there Monday, you would know. I mean, it was hard to get around. Sunday was a little less busy, so it was nice to do some shopping for family, but both days were great and busy. I just also want to say quickly, the marching band, I often talk about sports, but the marching band for Fairmont High School got second out of 15 local programs. It was the best of the best, and they got second. And then I will give a quick sports report. We have a really good football team that is unfortunately 0-3. They could so easily be 3-0, which is such a Browns fan kind of way of talking, but they are actually really good. They're not like the Browns. So keep supporting them, show up to games, they're a really good team, they're going to win against Centerville hopefully this week.
Okay.
That's it.
Make up for it all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're running long, so just two quick comments. Number one, I had the privilege to attend the Italian Fall Festival this past weekend, which has been going on since 1978. Good food, very crowded this year, and as already been mentioned, it is Hispanic Month, and I would get in trouble at home if I did not mention this because my wife is the former Letitia Torres.
That's right.
I had to miss all the Holiday at Home fun, so my only comment tonight is that I'm very happy to say that I have been appointed to the new Miami Valley Technology and Communications Group Board. This is the group that will oversee MBCC and MVECA. And I'm very excited to be on this new organization and help steer the new, this new group. Thank you.
Because Brian requested.
Listen, I'm going to defer my comments to Lisa so she can finish hers properly.
The KLA annual retreat is this Thursday and Friday, and we're very excited. Thanks, Brian.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. I don't have a whole lot to add, other than the fact that, want to also extend my congratulations to the Holiday at Home crowd for putting on a wonderful weekend that truly is one of the special things about belonging to this community. I would like to mention that we attended a really nice ribbon-cutting for the new facilities at the Charles Lathrum Center. Doug Lathrum, who is the son of Charles, came in from San Diego to accept our thanks for a million-dollar gift that his family gave to kind of update the Lathrum Center. And it was, it's a really beautiful-looking park. Get over there and play some pickleball and shuffleboard and some of the other things that they have going over there. It was really pretty cool. And I think that's about all I have to say. Let those kids go out and run in the sprinkler on splash pads so that they can get up bright and early and go to school on time
That's right.
...the following morning.
That's right.
Make sure your kids go to school. With that, we are going to go to executive session, so I will not hit the gavel. Thanks for being here tonight.